Keep the chickens in at night. Screen the chicken coop very well. They'll really eat eggs and send it to poultry. Playpods are particularly difficult. If you're building a playpond, make sure it's deep enough that the coy can hide from the raccoons or let the fish. Put a lot of objects around the playpond so that the raccoons have trouble standing on the edge of fishing. Different types of things, but call for advice if they're not there. The coyote is a very clever indigenous predator that has conformed to living in close proximity to humans. They are often seen in residential areas, around vacant lots, hillsides, parks, city streets, landscaped areas, and abandoned properties. Coyotes will travel via the use of horse trails, fire roads, aqueducts, flood control channels, freeways, erosion gutters, city streets, and sidewalks. Coyotes find water from a variety of sources throughout the city. The coyote's diet consists primarily of rodents, small mammals, and insects. When hunting in a pack, they will go for larger prey such as deer. Coyotes are also scavengers and will eat fruit, vegetable matter, and trash. They are opportunistic as well and will not hesitate to kill cats, small dogs, poultry, sheep, and goats when given the chance. People often call and ask what are the best ways to protect their property from coyotes and the intrusion from larger predators. Coyotes can scale a fence six feet in height, but it is possible to prevent intrusion by checking your fence to ensure it's in good repair. On hillside slopes, look for erosion or dig spots under the fence line, and talk to a licensed fencing company about installation of coyote fencing. Also, there are several products designed to keep coyotes and other large mammals at bay. For instance, a product called Coyote Roller consists of a rolling bar mounted to the top of your fence or wall and prevents these animals from getting a grip on top. Another product called Scarecrow is a motion sensor device attached to a simple garden hose and is activated when an animal walks by spraying water. Our department gets a lot of complaints about coyotes behaving unnaturally. What might cause a coyote to lose its fear of people or have a standoff with somebody?
When coyotes lose their fear of people or any wildlife, I think it's often going to be because there's some thing that's been bringing them in on a regular basis and they start to associate people not as a threat or something to be avoided, but with something that they need or want, like food in particular. And so when they start to find that on a regular basis in close proximity to people, I think that's when they start to lose their fear and become more of a problem. The truth is, we haven't studied coyotes in some of the very most urban areas, and that would be something that no one's really done. I mean, really, no one's actually studied directly these interactions between humans and coyotes. People have gathered anecdotal data about it, but no one's ever actually radio tracked coyotes right in these urban areas and been following animals when they've gotten into these problems with people. So it'd be really interesting to learn more directly about why these interactions are happening, and we're hoping to do that.
Here are a few simple reminders to help keep you safe from intruding wildlife. Keep your pets indoors or secured in an outdoor kennel. Lock your dog on leash at all times. Do not leave pet food or water bowls outside if your pet is not outdoors. Do not set trash out for pickup until the day of the pickup to reduce the chance of attracting predators. Do not attempt to pet or otherwise make contact with them. Coyotes are wild animals and should be treated as such. Never leave small children unattended. If you're approached by a coyote, you should wave your arm, shout in a low, loud tone, make yourself look as big as possible.
The mountain lions are the largest cat here in California, here in the San Monica Mountains. And here in the San Monica Mountains, there are very few of them actually, and as far as I know, these individuals that live in the San Monica Mountains have never had a conflict with people. If you do see one when you're hiking, the best thing to do is to not worry about it so much, is to face the animal and make yourself look bigger, and maybe make some noise and back up slowly, and usually the animal will just move on. They're usually just passing through. Normally, they're afraid of people.
So the natural reaction of a cat is to avoid people when they know that people are around?
They're usually very shy, elusive individuals, and that's one reason why you rarely see them.
Okay. Would you say that most of the cats that people see are cats that maybe were surprised hiking along a trail, nobody making much noise, and suddenly there's a cat in front of you?
Exactly. So if you are a little noisy while you're hiking, you might avoid an interaction or even siding with one of these animals.
Okay. A lot of people are very concerned about children when they're out hiking. Do you have any advice if you're with kids? What should you do if you're in mountain lion territory and come across a mountain lion?
Well, make sure the kids are close to you. You might want to hold their hands. Don't let them walk around in the wilderness areas next to the trail. Of course, cats are more attracted to smaller, moving objects that are vulnerable, so you want to really do take care of your kids. And of course, again, if you see one of the animals, keep the kids next to you. You might want to put the child on your shoulders. One thing that you can do is wear a T-shirt. Have the kids wear T-shirts and you yourself wear a T-shirt that is very striking, because mountain lions are attracted to deer. That's their normal prey. And deer are a solid tan color, and so the more striking your clothing is, the less you're going to look like a prey object. People aren't normally prey to wild animals, so it's an unusual situation if you're jogging or riding a mountain bike. You'd be more stimulating to a mountain lion that might be close by. So just be aware that the wild animals are there and we're in their territory.
I think it's important for the people of Los Angeles to understand some of the issues surrounding trapping. Is there any lights you can shut on that subject?
Normally, when animals are trapped, they are either relocated in the immediate vicinity or euthanized. So the best thing to do is to take care of your environment and take the necessary precautions to keep the intruders out. And if you do have a question, call Animal Control or an organization like The Nature of Wild Works, and we can help you out with the answers. You're actually much more likely to see a bobcat in your backyard than a mountain lion. Bobcats are small cats, and they thrive on small mammals like squirrels and birds, which are quite common, of course, in urban areas. Mountain lions prefer deer, and they need a much larger territory to survive, and they're also looking for hiding places that are safer. So they'd be much less likely to jump into your backyard than, of course, a bobcat.
This woodpile seems innocent enough, and it's a common fixture in many people's backyards, but this woodpile provides a home for hundreds of rodents, which in turn draws in large predators. If you're having trouble with larger predators and you have a woodpile, consider getting rid of the woodpile. If you absolutely have to have one, keep it inside of some sort of enclosure to prevent the rodents from getting in. This is a common cause of many animal-related problems, falling fruit off of trees. Most wildlife in Los Angeles love to eat fruit. They'll do anything to get it. So it's a good idea to keep it cleaned up around your yard. Many people like to garden, and back here we have an example of such a garden. We have plenty of fruits and vegetables. This is a fencing designed to keep rabbits out, but in order to protect it from other mammals, you would pretty much want to protect the entire vegetable garden with some type of sturdier fencing. You know, it's very important for all members of the community to do what they can to keep their properties clear and free of vegetation, to make it less inviting to the wildlife. Behind me up the stairway, there's houses lining both sides. It's hard to see through the massive vegetation, but we have a house up here we're going to take a look at. We're going to see what might make it less inviting to the wildlife. Your property may not be vacant like the one behind me, but as a member of the community, you have a responsibility to keep your property clear and free of vegetation. I've seen signs coming in of wildlife intrusion, such as scat, soup bones, that type of thing, but I want to take a closer look. Fences are very important, not only to keep your pets in, but to keep the wildlife out. It's always a good idea to check your fences and make sure they're in good repair. There was an attempt by the homeowner at one point to put up a fence to keep the animals in or out, but that has since gone by the wayside. There's a large hole here where the wildlife is coming in and out. The space underneath this deck is full of debris, a perfect place for rodents to live and breed. This is also a perfect place for wildlife to hunt. Wildlife call an overgrown yard like this home. It's full of palm fronds, debris, various places for birds and rodents to hide and nest, which in turn draws in the wildlife. Let's take a look at a home that might be more typical of the one that you live in. I'm here in a beautiful Los Angeles neighborhood, and I'm standing in a yard that's obviously very nice. It's well-kept and well-maintained. The vegetation, as beautiful as it is, provides a hiding place for animals, for animals to do their daily activities, their nightly activities, maybe provide a meal for those animals that eat insects. If this resident were having trouble with certain types of animals, I might suggest that they take a look at the vegetation, maybe space things out a little bit, not create such a wall or dark places for animals to hide. Let's see if we can find anything else. Deer can get over most fences, and the reason that they're coming over the fence is most likely to get at the plants that you have in your yard. Deer are particularly attracted for roses, for instance. We like them for their beauty. Deer like them to eat, the rose buds and rose hips, but they eat a variety of plants that we normally put in our gardens. If you're having trouble with things like that, talk to your local nurseryman. Maybe he can give you suggestions as to what types of plants to put in that deer might find is tasteful. In this instance, the homeowner's done the right thing by placing adequate screening across the attic vent. This will prevent intrusion by small animals such as squirrels, rats, and nesting birds. If these spaces were larger, it might also provide access for animals such as raccoons and possums. A lot of animals really have no trouble finding water in our city. It runs down our gutters most of the time. We don't want to make life easy for them by providing water sources in our own backyards. I don't want to discourage you from getting a water fountain, but if you do, you can expect to maybe have some animal come in and drink at some point. Here we have a capped chimney. One of the problems we have in Los Angeles is with uncapped chimneys. It's often very common to have squirrels and birds come down the chimney and get stuck in the flue. We strongly recommend that you place a cap over the top. It's very important to keep the screens underneath the house in good repair. In summer, it makes for a very quiet and cool place; in the wintertime, provides warmth and dryness. Also, a perfect place for animals to raise their young. This resident had been complaining about smelling skunks in the house. A quick look around, we found a damaged screen. As you can see, it goes through. It's complete with animal hair, so it indicates that an animal's been in and out of here. I'm going to take a look and see if I see anything. Wood decks and patios are a beautiful addition to any home, but the crawl spaces underneath give animals a place to hide. By simply screening them off, you prevent access by animals. If you suspect a skunk or raccoon has invaded the crawl space, there's an easy way to check to see whether they may still be under there before you can close up the screen. A simple trick: take a little flower. Just put a bit of flower in front of the hole where they're coming in and out. Now, this obviously has to be done at an evening when you're going to be home. Check frequently. If you see little paw prints leaving, you know you can safely close up the screen so you can better secure it. I hope you've enjoyed today's program, and more importantly, understand some of our urban wildlife and ways to peacefully coexist with them. I'm Troy Boswell, and I'll see you next time on Wildlife Encounters.
This is a great city made up of many great communities, and along with Big Sunday, all across the region, some 50,000 people will be engaging in service.
It's great to be able to touch so many people and reach so many people in so many great causes that we couldn't have reached otherwise.
It's cathartic, because it's also an opportunity for all of us to do our little part, to do something to make someone else's life or your community a little better.
On Saturday, May 2nd, Mayor Antonio Villarogosa sponsored another of his Days of Service, a way to bring the entire city together to concentrate on the needs of a particular part of the city. This time, it was the Harbor area, and a Day of Service co-sponsored by the Office of 15th District Councilmember Janice Hahn.
This has been a fairly neglected part of the city for a long, long time, and I think it's good that we're giving it a spotlight and emphasis on things getting better and cleaner.
Sometimes we are feel like the forgotten part of the city of Los Angeles, and where we're standing right here, of course, in the Harbor Gateway Area, has long been an area that's been underserved and has had high crime.
One of those crimes occurred in December 2006, when 14-year-old Cheryl Green was killed in a gang-related racially motivated shooting. As part of this Day of Service, volunteers work on what will soon be the Cheryl Green Community Center.
And Cheryl was a young African-American girl who was 14, not too far from here. She was about a couple blocks from her home after school, and she was shot and killed. And on that day, I stood with her mother, and I said, "We will have a community center in this neighborhood where kids have a place to go after school."
When it's finished, the Cheryl Green Community Center will be a welcoming place for young people here in the Harbor area.
There's some offices. There's a computer room that's going to go in, an office, a reception counter, and a handicap restroom. And obviously, we're going to be painting it and painting the outside. We're going to be putting landscaping, grass for the kids, and some plants, and make it really nice for them.
This is going to be a safe place for the kids to be after school. We're providing transportation. We're providing after-school programs, tutoring. We're building a computer lab.
Janice Hahn and many of you who live in this community have said for a long time that we need a place for young people, a community center, a place where they can be safe, learn, and enjoy the benefits of this great community.
On behalf of my daughter Charlene Lovett and our family, I would like to thank everybody that's here today that's honoring the memory of my granddaughter Cheryl. She hasn't really been missed because she's always been here with us, but we just miss seeing her smiling face and asking for more food to eat. So I just thank everybody for being here today. Thank you.
Mayor Villarogosa's next stop on this Harbor Area Day of Service was Harbor Towers in San Pedro. Here, the mayor helped volunteers serve breakfast to 180 hungry senior citizens. Everyone, including the mayor, had a great time.
At a time when so many people are feeling like nobody cares, it's great to participate in events like this, because it says, "I care about you, and I care about this community." And it's fun. It wasn't work.
After serving breakfast, it was time for a trip to nearby Wilmington, where Mayor Villarogosa and Councilmember Hahn took to the water to clean up trash and lead by example. All in all, more than 10,000 volunteers from more than 100 locations took part in this Day of Service, testament to the mayor's unwavering belief that, especially in these tough economic times, if we all come together, we can all do some good.
I believe in these Days of Service because it's an opportunity for all of us to make a difference, not to look to the government, not to look to the mayor, but to say, "I want to make a difference."
At Harbor Village in Harbor City, people lined up for groceries, and Mayor Villarogosa was right there with them, making sure the low-income residents here got the help they need.
We're going to do 200 trees in this area.
Yeah.
Perfect. That sound good?
The mayor next went to Wilmington Industrial Park to help plant trees in honor of the late founder of Juanita's Foods, George de La Torre Jr. This Day of Service was held in conjunction with Sheriff Fest and with Big Sunday, which is in its 11th year of bringing people together to do good in their communities, and all close to 70,000 volunteers took part all over Los Angeles.
Our whole idea of Big Sunday is bringing people together from all different worlds, all different walks of life. We've been in this South Bay area for years now, but with you guys here, it's just, it's great to be able to touch so many people and reach so many people in so many great causes that we couldn't have reached otherwise.
At the day's closing ceremonies held at Banning Park in Wilmington, Mayor Villarogosa met with the crowd, including a family that's been through some tough times but knows there are better days ahead.
It makes us feel, you know, like he's doing his job as a mayor. You know, he comes out here, spends some time with us here, and it makes us feel, you know, it feels really good to have the mayor come out and speak with us. Because, you know, I know he's got a lot of other things to do, but actually to come out of his way to come to Wilmington and to get us, you know, together, just makes me feel really good, you know?
I don't have to tell you that right now, there are a lot of people out of a job. There are people who've lost their homes. There are people who are struggling to make ends meet. So now, more than ever, it's important that we reach out to one another, that we create community. And this Day of Service is an opportunity for everybody to reach out to somebody in need, to say we're one community.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We are here for the meeting on September 8th, 2009. It is Tuesday, and welcome to the members of the public who have joined us here in council chambers, as well as in our chambers in San Pedro and Van Nuys. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 as well, which broadcasts us live every meeting on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m., and rebroadcast these meetings in the evening as well. For your convenience, these meetings are also available online through webcasts at lacity.org and also through Council Phone, which is a service of the City of Los Angeles, where you can use your telephone to call in and listen to the council meetings. That number is 213-621-CITY, 213-621-CITY. I want to thank those council members who are here on time. Pursuant to city council rules, all council members should be here at the top of the hour, and council members Labonge, Perry, Wesson, and Zine are all here. That only leaves us with myself with five members, though, and we are five members short of 10 or two-thirds of our body and a quorum to begin business. Councilmember Cardenas is excused, and Council District Two has a vacancy, so we need five of the following eight members to join us to begin our council meeting, but all are expected. The following council members are now late: Councilmembers Alacon, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Smith. If you'll please join us as soon as possible, councilmembers Alacon, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Smith. Our agendas are available here in council chambers. They're also online or through the City Clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting agendas. Those agendas are split into items that have had public hearings and those for which a public hearing has not yet been heard. All items will have a public hearing, and if it is here in council after having had a public hearing in committee, it requires a member to reopen that hearing, but any item that has not yet had its public hearing will be heard here in chambers. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comments. That's for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. We'd be happy to hear your comments for two minutes at the meeting as well, and there's a podium here and also availability through San Pedro and Van Nuys to be heard. I want to thank Councilmember Hahn, who has joined us as well. We're now up to six members. Still awaiting council members, and Mr. Smith is here too. We're at seven. So still awaiting councilmembers Alacon, Wezar, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, and Rosendahl. There are speaker cards in the back for any of those items you'd like to be heard on, as well as in our remote locations, which we can listen to via teleconferencing facilities. And also, on the agendas online, there are links to all the supporting materials for each of these. Many of the questions you may have can be answered by looking at the departmental and CAO and CLA reports that are there online for your convenience. We also have a member of the City Clerk's office here available to answer any of your questions and to refer any inquiries you have as well. So with that, we will begin the meeting shortly. Thank you for your patience while we await those late council members. Thank you for your patience while we await those late council members. Councilmembers Alakon, Wezar, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl. Thank you. This is our final forum call for councilmembers Alakon, Wezar, Reyes, and Rosendahl. I'm going to inform, Mr. Corretts is attending to the sinkhole in the San Fernando Valley, so we are just awaiting... Mr. Reyes is here. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We are just awaiting Mr. Alakon, Mr. Wezar, and Mr. Rosendahl. If we do not reach a quorum in the next two minutes, we will not have a meeting today. One minute left, councilmembers Alakon, Wezar, Corretts, Rosendahl. If you don't see one here soon, we will have a meeting soon. You can have the sergeant-at-arms. I know at least Mr. Rosendahl is in the building. Oh, there he is, right there. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Wezar, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Grissette. Ten members present, and a quorum is present.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
All right, Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Labonge moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Okay, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise. Mr. Labonge, if you'll be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
But if I could ask all the guests here in the John F. R. Chambers to please rise, including citizens from Hawthorne, California, place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge, next order of business.
Mr. President, you wish to go through the agenda?
Yes, please, if we can run through the agenda.
First items on the agenda, items one through five are street lighting district's notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on September 29th.
All right, without objection, we will go ahead and continue those ordinances and leave the public comment open until the 29th. Thank you. Next item?
Item six is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District Seven. Notice for public hearing, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay, we'll move that. If nobody wishes to be heard on that, let's prepare the roll on item six, and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. The next items, please.
Items seven through 15 are items which public hearings have been held. Item seven is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk.
And on item 12, there is a request to continue that matter to September 22nd.
Any objection, colleagues, to continuing 12 until the 22nd of September? Is that an objection to continuing this? Okay, then, so ordered. Yes, Mr. Labonge?
Item 11 for Councilwoman Han.
Okay. Item 11, we'll call special. Other specials, colleagues? Eight through 15? Which one? Eight through 15? Okay, we're at eight through 15 right now. We'll get to that in just a moment, Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, on item eight, that is an ordinance. There should be 12 members today. Do you wish to hold that?
Let's hold that till we have 12, and let's take up the balance. Nine, 10, and 13 through 15, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. Next items.
Items 16 through 32, items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration. Items 16 and 17 are also commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those?
Yep, let's hold those on the desk, and we'll go ahead, and we do not have cards on those, too. We'll open and close the public hearings on those. We have cards on a few of these, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 21, 22, 24, 31, and 32.
Okay. And Mr. Rosendahl wanted 21 special as well. We'll call that special for him. Mr. Parks?
Fourth with on number nine, and number 20 special for Mr. Wezar.
Thirty?
Twenty.
Twenty, sorry. Okay. Let's go ahead then and take up the balance of the items. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, and if we can go to the supplemental agenda?
On the supplemental agenda, item 33 is an item which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on that.
Okay, we'll call that special for the card from the public. That'll take us to our general public comment now. I'd like to ask Dr. Clyde Williams to step forward as our first speaker. After that will be Sean Murphy.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrow Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. It's difficult this morning because Rules Committee is going to be considering changing of the public comment periods. I hope some time soon, and I hope they reject it. Now, State Route 710, there is a bill called AB 545 that was passed without the inclusion of protection for El Sereno. El Sereno was promised in verbal commitments by the district manager for Caltrans, saying that Mr. Wezar and Mr. Verruggosa had asked them to move the portal south of the valley, but now it's not restricted. That means we could lose 300 to 400 houses in El Sereno just by the stroke of a pen. So we would greatly appreciate some resolution regarding the State Route 710 within El Sereno and other communities in Northeast LA. Quorums related to the rules. If you're going to change the public comments, please change the rules regarding the quorum has to be maintained throughout the public comment period. Mr. Parks has contributed to the neighborhood councils over this last week by providing us with information on how the budget is developed. Later on, there will be discussions on an agenda item related thereto. Mr. Wezar has met with the Southwest Museum people and has finally realized the futility of negotiating with Autry National Center.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Sean Murphy is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sachs.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning, Mr. President. It's good to see you. I wish you were here last week when I returned, when I came back last week.
Welcome back, council.
I know you guys are going to fly up to Sacramento after the meeting to... You'll be gone Wednesday and Friday, I know that. Why does the City of Los Angeles have to wait till things break, like the transformers of DWP in the streets? They waited... Should have been fixed. When the city was built, I mean, why does they have to wait 100 years to have the streets cracked? It's not right. They should get it fixed between, whatever, five to 10 years. Why does it have to wait to... Why do you guys... Why does LA have to wait to have the thing streets broke? You guys should repair this, avoid the breaks, avoid the breaks of DWP transformers. It's been a while since I've been here, it's June 16th, Mr. Council, and just a minute. I know people have... There's been a change in KFWB this morning. Dr. Lloyd is going to be on in two hours. Sorry, KFWB changed to news talk, from all news to news talk, but you can listen to KNX 1070 News Radio.
If I can just remind you, Mr. Murphy, we don't have direct jurisdiction over the radio, so if we can bring it back to things in the city, it's all right, don't worry. Anything else about the city?
Have the streets repaired, that's all.
Thank you very much, sir, and we actually will be here on Wednesday and Friday. I misspoke, it's next week that we will be at the California League of Cities Conference. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. Last meeting, you had an item on your agenda regarding sending notification to the state legislation regarding some clarification of Assembly Bill. So I asked about the clarification, and it's how it's thrown about in this LA City Council. I came up with these clarified examples. The council's action regarding the exclusive advertising made available to LA Live's AEG, awarded to LA Arena Land Company exclusively, $2 million plus a percentage for what was later disclosed as 40,000 square feet of advertisement. Very clear. How about the item you had on the agenda on Friday with the golf carts? A contract for over $3 million, $1 million more than what will be generated from the LA Convention billboard district. A scoring problem came up. There was a scoring problem that was made public with the appointment of a contractor at Lawa for $25 million. The scoring was changed four to one to five to zero. Any problem there? Very clear. No questions asked. How about the marathon contract, where the award was to one company, passed to a company of the city's choice, no opportunity made to revisit negotiations, six-year contract broken? What was the cost there? And the DWP fiasco. You can make recommendations regarding fees they charge for parking, but how about controlling the rates they charge? And let's not forget the living wage law. Here's an example for you, Councilman Alakon. The members of EC will be making more money, but they'll lose their health benefits. Isn't that a wonderful turn off? Turnover.
Thank you, and just before, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Labonge, for a quick introduction?
If I could, please, during this public comment, we have a very special distinguished guest from our sister city of Busan, Korea. Please give him a big hand as we welcome him here, led by Hardang Lee, head of the Assembly. And this is the public comment people, where people could come and fill out a card and speak whatever they want to talk to about issues related to the city of Los Angeles. We certainly welcome you, Mr. President. They're going to have a tour of a variety of city departments on their way, and it's very special greetings also from Mr. Wesson, my colleague, who says, "Come sabida chigo."
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for your understanding. Mr. Hunt is our next speaker, and then we'll go to Van Nuys, and Rick Nightingale will be the speaker following Mr. Hunt. Good morning.
Well, you guys brought me back down here again. I'm down here regarding the Matt Dowd issue, and let me remind you guys, you guys cannot vote on a word, and merely just a word, that he was taken out of the chambers for, which was unconstitutional. Number one, an ordinance don't take place for 60 days. Mr. City Attorney, you need to take care of that and bring Matt Dowd back here. And number two, Matt Dowd should really be back down here, you know, or I'll go back down to my old tactics, the KKK versus the City of Los Angeles, which is truly legal, and banning birds state that. I got all my case law, but the next thing you guys really need to worry about is really having your attorney aware. Mr. City Attorney, you're getting ready to do a lot of paperwork because there will be an injunction on the decorum, so you can't enforce anything. I'm the only one, I'm the only one that got the president coaching the Hispanics in a form that was truly interrupted, and the website is KKK Confronts LAPD. You guys go to YouTube and catch it, but like I said, you guys should really be worried about the lawsuit that is actually getting ready to come forth out of this. Merely a word or merely an outfit cannot cause a disruption for city council members. You guys is disrupted more by the outside than you guys are listening to the public comments. So just a reminder, please, I want to be at home, but if Matt's not here, then I'm going to be here, and it's not going to be too fun. So I know you guys would much rather have Matt Dowd than Mr. Hunt. Please clear it up. Please bring him back, and the vote was unconstitutional. A word cannot cause a disruption.
Thank you very much. I'll restate again, as I've restated many times, the no words were the cause of disruption. We lost the quorum in the meeting, which is why we did not continue. Oh, right, there was disruptive behavior, that is correct, that had disruptive effect, and rules that were not being abided by not words, but rules. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker from Van Nuys, and then... Rick Nightingale is our next speaker from Van Nuys, and then Walter Bechtel will speak next here in council chambers. Good morning.
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. I read in the paper that you people might have public comment at the end of the meeting. I realize people down there, they did cause a disturbance, and Matt Dowd did, I mean, it was uncalled for the language, I agree with that. And it was excessive that you're going to not let him be here for two and a half months, and I mean, that's your choice, too. He knew the penalty, and he did it anyway. But to penalize the rest of us because you people get static from a few of us, how many are that come up here and give you static? I don't think I give you too much. And Zuma Doggy does, and Matt Dowd, he does, and Hunt, he does, but three people out of all the people that gives you a complete negative attitude, and now you're going to put it to the end of me that we, if we want to speak, that we have to go through the whole meeting to make our two-minute fame? I mean, how petty are you people that you can't stand a little bit of criticism that you have to put up and say, "Well, we don't like the game, and we can change the rules because we're the boss, and we can do anything we want." I mean, you are people like a little sandbox, and if you don't like my game, then we're going to change the rules, and then we don't want you, so why don't you just leave? So if I want to have a little two minutes of fame and to get it off my shoulders, I have to be here for two and a half to three hours to turn around and tell you different things that I think. I mean, that's just not fair. It's just not fair, and I'm sure these other few people down there have to agree with me, that you can't stand it for whatever and that. We don't get any information from you people, nothing. The media is corrupt, they don't tell you anything that's going on. You have them in your pocket, I mean, why even turn the TV on unless it's about a fire or a car chase? That's about the only good thing that they're good for, because they don't give you any things that are going on in the city here, because it's so darn corrupted, nothing else goes on, and we give you a little static and you turn around and play, "I don't want to play no more." Thank you.
Thank you. Just before we hear from Mr. Bechtel, I think Mr. Alacon wanted to respond briefly.
I don't want to speak to the item specifically, we'll do that when the matter comes before us, but I do want to say that historically, the public comment had always been at the end of the meeting, it was changed just a few years ago, that was the change, and frankly, when I came back, it was unusual to me that that change had been made. So this is just to put the priority where it should be on the matters that are scheduled.
And public comment on those items as well, I imagine. Mr. Bechtel is our next speaker.
Yeah, there's going to be... That's one of the items about public comment?
No, not today.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Was it going to be on Wednesday or something?
No, it's just a motion that was introduced that's going to committee.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm just curious about that. Well, I didn't really know if I should have any... I didn't really have anything to say today, I just want to reiterate about the rules over there in SRO. I wanted to say, they do not feel, and they have told me, that they do not feel that any of the regulations that the zoning administrator has put down over there at the Ford Hotel apply to them, and I wanted to remind the council that most of the 18 conditions put down on the Ford Hotel were due to the problem over in that area of town, not the owner or anything. And those conditions, by condition 18, run with the land, and so, and because of that, it doesn't matter who the owner is, or who the assign is, or who has the title or not, or who signed any covenant or not, that's still the responsibility of whoever sits the hotel. It doesn't matter... And they flat out told me that those rules and regulations don't apply, they do not have to enforce the law, they don't have to evict anybody, there's somebody up there who's running prostitutes out of his room right now, there's all kinds of prostitute problems going around all over in that area of town right now, and drugs and everything is starting to come back there, and that's why we have the with-the-land ruling. It's nothing personal, and I don't think you people, I don't think they understand, you should remind them, instead of having to go into another meeting and have them be reminded there at the zoning administration meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. That'll close our general public comment. I know one of our speakers brought up a feeling of a lack of information, I wanted to point out to all members of the public, three ways that you can obtain information. Obviously, we make the meetings, both our committee and full council meetings, as open and as transparent as possible, both through your telephone, the internet, and live on TV, as well as a fourth way in person. Secondly, all of the materials that are presented to council members are available now online, that is a change that happened about two years ago. We can click on the agendas and read all of the reports that we read as well, so that is made readily available before the meetings to everybody. And then lastly, we have liaison, as I mentioned before, from the city clerk's office, who can help you navigate any more complex issues in here, and can explain any of the particulars if those first two ways cause any confusion at all. So please avail yourself of that, we welcome your input, your comments, and as always, we thank members of the public for general public comment. If we can take up the ordinance number eight, we do have 12 members now, if we can please open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And let's go to the commissioners next, if we can ask Mr. Ruiz to come forward to the table here. Welcome you, and congratulations on your nomination. This went through our Arts Parks Committee, and Mr. Labange, I think, is around here, but Mr. Ruiz, why don't you let us know your interest in serving? I know you'll be one of the very youngest commissioners we've had, and let us know your interest and your background a little bit for the council, and thank you again for offering yourself forward for service.
Thank you so much, Council President. My name is Ari Ruiz, and I am very deeply honored and moved by Mayor Antonio Villarreal's nomination. I want to thank those of those who are here with me today, who include Tammy Membreño, Anne Marie, Virginia, Gail Rolfe, Michael Colorige, and Fina Medrano. As you know, the life of politics is very hard, but you also find people who are there to support you, and definitely, I've been blessed to find those people along the way. I live in El Cerrino, and I'm currently working with Body of Action as an outreach coordinator where I serve as a community liaison. I'm also working with Stonewall Young Democrats, and we are working on marriage equality. As you know, Proposition 8 passed, and we are very, we're working towards restoring equality in California. So without further ado, I want to thank the chairman of the Arts and Parks Committee, Mr. Tom Labange, for being so helpful, and his office is truly a role model as to how public elected officials offices should be open and welcoming to everyone regardless of anything. So I want to thank him, and I want to thank Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston for their time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruiz. I'd like to recognize the chair of that committee now, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, members. You just heard from a very impressive young man who cares about other people and is here to take advantage of an opportunity, a great appointee of Mayor Antonio Villarreal, and I call for an aye vote. We had a great opportunity to hear his passion in committee this morning with Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston, and I ask for an aye vote of this fine young commissioner, Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you. Mr. Huizar is our next speaker.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Mr. Ruiz for his wonderful work, I met him when I was at the school district, very active student. We knew then that he would be, continue to be involved and give up himself to the community, and we see it through his activism at the LA Neighborhood Council, LA 32, as they call themselves. Also, he does a lot of work in community outreach for Body of Action. You may say he's young, Mr. President, but certainly a lot of wisdom and experience here, so welcome and congratulations. I think your perspective is going to add a lot to this commission. In fact, when we appointed you to the youth council, we said that you were very active there, took your job seriously, and did a lot of good work there, so congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huizar. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Ruiz and thank him for his positive energy. I did ask him a question in committee, I was hoping he would share your answer, and that question was, after spending some time on the commission, what would he like to see that he has left behind as a positive impact, a result, a goal? Can you share that with the rest of the body, so it'd be very specific how you would conduct yourself and what you'd like to see as a commissioner, so that they give a reason to vote for you, other than the fact that you're a great guy?
Definitely, I, as Councilman Ruiz said, you know, I've been involved for a couple of, you know, years now, and I remember protesting in his office for school reform, so definitely, education is one of my top priorities, and making sure that we continue with what the mayor has done towards decreasing the dropout rate in Los Angeles. But also, I think, one of my other passions, as I told Councilmember Reyes, was public safety. Public safety has always been an important issue for the city of Los Angeles, and so as I look forward after my two years, I want to be able to establish collaborations between departments, and looking to resources that are already there to be more effective towards addressing some of the problems in public safety. One of the commission's most successful programs is the Kids Watch L.A. program, which it's a broad of staff and parent volunteers. So I want to be able to establish that in most, if the budget gets better, establish that in most of our schools with the commission's help. So definitely, public safety and education are a big, big part of what drives me, and I want to make a difference in.
And I was suggesting, Mr. Ruiz, that perhaps in his capacity as commissioner, he give Department of Transportation to provide to you the state routes maps, and perhaps look at the overlays that exist where you can map out, and I hate to speak this way, but it's a harsh reality in some of the areas in our city, where you have the shootings that occur, major incidents that deals with crime overlap with these safe routes maps, and perhaps have the parents, the teachers be aware of them, so the kids know how to get to the school and back, understanding the dangerous areas that do exist, and that's just, again, food for thought, I'm hoping that it's a part of the process you will engage to result in the goals that you have established, so...
Definitely.
Thank you for your time, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruiz, I mean, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Huizar for your comments, as well as Mr. Labange for shepherding this through committee, and again, Mr. Ruiz, thank you for your answers and your insights, and with that, let's go ahead and take a vote. Please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Round of applause for our new commissioner. Welcome aboard. If we can take up the next two commissioners, item number 16 next, there's Mrs. Winnick, if you'd like to come forward as well, and like to recognize our chair of the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee, again, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members, Karen Winnick has been an outstanding member of the Zoo Commission, very passionate, involved in all aspects, very concerned about education, which is so key, and I ask for an aye vote, and Ms. Winnick, if you want to give us a little update on your progress of your work at the zoo on the commission, thank you for your service to the people of Los Angeles.
Okay. President and commissioners, I thank you for allowing me to be here and for being nominated for the third time. I love the LA Zoo, I think it's one of the most important venues in the city, especially for the children of Los Angeles, and I am so concerned about the environment and animals, and to shepherd in a whole new generation of children that understand the importance of preserving species, and the LA Zoo can take a leadership role in our country in teaching children about the animals and respect and admiration, and shepherding in their efforts to preserve the species in the wild. So I thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you for your service to the people of Los Angeles.
Mr. President. Thank you, and I can definitely second what you said, Mr. Labange, you are a true angel, to quote Mr. Labange in the city of angels, and we appreciate all the service that you've given the people, and we look forward to seeing that during very difficult times you've served, and we appreciate you and everything you've done. And Mr. Rosendahl would like to be heard, and then we'll take a vote. Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am thrilled you're doing this, because you bring a lot of energy, you bring a lot of vision and inspiration to people, but I'll never forget the other day, about six, eight months ago, the room was packed, and it was all about the elephant.
Yes.
And I still have people coming up to me angry at me because I changed my vote from an earlier vote three years before, where I thought it was too expensive of a deal, and we shouldn't do it, but then we did do it, and we were moving forward, and then when I found out, three things: one, it would cost more to just shut it down;
Yes.
Two, the staff of the zoo are incredibly committed to giving that elephant the best of care; and three, a lot of people would never get to see an elephant in any other way. But the tension in the community was incredible. I still have people really angry at me for moving in that direction. I love your reflective opinion on how we can bring everybody into supporting the zoo.
Okay. First of all, I have to thank you so much for changing your vote, it meant everything to me. I honestly believe it's a matter of educating people, because I didn't know very much about elephants, and I went to the zoo and heard a lecture by Cynthia Moss, and my dream was to go visit Cynthia Moss in Ambosale, and for a year, I read every book I could get my hands on about elephants, and I went to Ambosale, I went all over, I met with Richard Leakey, and I'm on a website, due to Joyce Poole, who's on the other side of the fence from me, who I've supported in terms of her studies of elephant vocalizations, I've also supported both the Tennessee and Paws sanctuaries, but what I've learned is that elephants, and I've said this before, they are so threatened in the wild, and they're not the only animals, of course, their habitats have been taken by farmland, China has been buying ivory, so there are poachers, and we need to educate people. Zoos are not what they were 30 years ago, and things don't change overnight. I mean, zoos years ago didn't do always the right things by their animals, now they are the preservers of species, okay, and they're educating people, and I swear to you, if these people would be educated and open their minds to learning how threatened animals, and especially elephants, are in the wild, they would understand that having a few well-cared-for elephants at the LA Zoo to show children and adults how amazing these creatures are, then people will be mobilized to try and protect them in the wild. So it's education. The more you know, and the truth is, the more I know, the more upset I get.
Yes.
Because I realize how, you know, all we can do is take small steps, but so many of the things were... I understand that people have all good intentions, but so many of the things that were said on the other side had to do with the way things were so many years ago. I'm very impassioned about this issue, because I think elephants are amazing animals, and I think that the LA Zoo can really have a leadership role.
Well, I want to thank you for that, because that passion is exactly where I came. I've had the privilege of traveling the planet and seeing elephants in all kinds of environments, but I walked that piece of land and felt that they were making a major effort to create an environment that would be, you know, a good environment for the elephant, and since he's a young, strong elephant, I'm looking forward to possibly breeding and having some young elephants.
And it will be in that land, too, because I've visited zoos in different parts of the world, and as long as they get exercise and they get fed, they don't need to travel huge distances, it's all about survival in the wild.
Right, right. Well, thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Oh, no.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for allowing me to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations again, and thank you again for your service, we appreciate it very much. If we can take up item 11, I think, Ms. Han, if you just wanted to vote on this one, if we can please open the roll on 11, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, that is approved. That is approved. Next commission appointment is number 17, and Mr. Yeah, forthwith on that one, absolutely. We'll send that forthwith, number 11, without objection. So... Oh, I'm sorry, it was called special by Ms. Han, so we'll... Ms. Han, we'll have to come back, Mr. Alacon wanted to be heard on it, so we'll reconsider when she comes back. Oh, you want to be a no on it? I'm sorry, I thought you said you wanted to be heard on it. If we can record...
I want to be heard by my wife.
No, no, Mr. Alacon, I thought, wanted to be heard. He wanted to vote no as well, so if we can record him as a no. With that, if we can ask Mr. Perez to come forward, thank you as well for your... Thank you as well for your desire to serve the good men and women of the fire and police pension systems and the people of Los Angeles. And this went through our Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Clerk. This is through your committee. Mr. Parks, I'd like to recognize first as Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, let me apologize, first of all, that we weren't able to coordinate all of these meetings. But one of the things, we wanted to give you an opportunity to tell the council as it relates to the police-fire pension, just what you perceive your role is and how you will impact that system and some of your thoughts on those issues.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Parks. With respect to my role, obviously, a paramount duty is to maintain the financial viability of the pension and the system and to ensure that benefits continue to be provided at a sufficient level for the members of that system. Obviously, the Commissioners and the Board and the system don't operate in a bubble, and an important consideration is obviously is to consider the projections and assumptions that are made by the Board with respect to rate of returns and how that impacts employer contributions or city contributions. I understand from my discussions with the General Manager that the Board has taken steps to try to alleviate the burden in the short term with respect to the city budget process by shortening, extending the smoothing process, expanding the market quarters. I intend to evaluate both the short-term impact of those proposals and actions and weigh the long-term impact as well. Those are what I see as my primary two priorities as a Commissioner on the Board.
May I ask you also, have you kept up with some of the issues that have been publicized in the New York papers and New Mexico papers and also here locally, dealing with this whole issue of conflict of interest of Board members and also that third-party placement agents?
Yes, I'm fully aware of what has transpired in the state of New York, New Mexico, as well as here locally. My understanding is that the Board has taken some action already with respect to a contractor disclosure policy. One of the positives I think I bring to the table is that I don't come from the financial community, per se. I am a corporate lawyer. But with that, I come with independence and an open mind, and I intend to make sure that policy that's already been adopted by the Board is implemented fully, and if it needs further refinement, I intend to contribute to that process.
Have you gone through with ethics about conflict of interest and other issues as relates to this position within the pension system?
Yes, yes, I have. Both in meeting with the mayor and the staff members of the mayor, it's obviously, that's a paramount priority for the mayor, is transparency and avoiding conflicts of interest. And as well, I have studied the proposals by the Board, which I understand some of them have been adopted and are in the process of being implemented. It is commitment from day one to make sure that, for lack of a better term, reform effort continues.
Have you given any consideration of some of the things that you may have to do to shorten that learning curve?
To shorten the what?
Your learning curve as it relates to these issues coming before the Pension Board.
If I can just briefly, by my background, I am the son of migrant farmworkers who believed in education, hard work, and all of my success has been because of determination and a strong work ethic. I'm going to get my hands dirty and learn and ask questions, be critical to shorten that learning curve. And so I'm confident, whatever I lack in regards to relevant experience with financial institutions, I'll compensate with a strong work ethic and a determination to do a good job for the city and for the mayor and for the Board.
Have you given any thought as to your responsibilities on the Board from the fiduciary responsibility versus the social responsibility?
Yes. Again, my understanding, based on state law, is that the duty to the system and to the members would be paramount. But to the extent that you can strike a balance between fulfilling that duty, prudent financial investments, and encouraging responsible corporate behavior, I would look for that opportunity. And my understanding, again, the discussions with the General Manager, is that the Board has adopted a policy that would try to balance those interests with mindful of that, you know, the fiduciary duty to the system and to the members remains a priority. I believe that they have a policy where they can engage a corporation where they have received notice or evidence that it's possibly engaging in conduct that is socially responsible. And perhaps the next step would be divestment. The process is in the works, is from my understanding. And it'd be something that I'd evaluate on an ongoing basis.
And what is your understanding of the Board's position as it relates to its independence from other parts of the city structure?
There's certain things that obviously, there's a perception, I think, of what the Boards can't, the Commissioners can and cannot do. Obviously, we don't participate in labor negotiation process, and we can't control the amount of employee contributions or some of the other policies that are part of the defined benefits. But to the extent that our responsibility is to manage the assets, maintain the viability of the assets, I think it's important to exercise significant independence in that to make sure that all the decisions are based on the merit of the financial investments and nothing else, to enhance, again, the viability of the system and enhance the benefits available to the members.
And then my final question is that, as we've ended last fiscal year and looking at the downturn of the economy, any thoughts as it relates to addressing that unfunded liability and other issues that are being considered as it relates to the financial, current financial impact on the fund?
Yes. Obviously, Los Angeles and throughout the state, and if not throughout the nation, all pensions suffered perhaps devastating losses. I believe in, for the city of Los Angeles, it's, this fiscal year was in the neighborhood of 20%. The last six months, I presume, have helped put the Board back in the right direction so far as there has been a recovery in the markets. I believe the proposals being considered by the Board and perhaps already adopted, I'm not 100% certain if they've already adopted them, with respect to, against lengthening the smoothing process, widening the market quarters, will provide short-term relief. And I think that's a step in the right direction. Obviously, we still cannot lose sight of the fact that it is a short-term relief, and we have to take consideration the long-term impact of some of the decisions, as decisions that are deferred, perhaps for the next generation of taxpayers or elected officials. And that should be part of the dialogue as well, is seeking long-term solutions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, certainly, this is a very important commission within the city and certainly has gotten a lot of notoriety of late. But this is one of those positions that I would encourage that we endorse, Mr. Perez's nomination. He's the resident of the 14th District and also, as you mentioned earlier, Harvard-trained lawyer. And certainly, from my conversation with him, appear that he is more than willing to take a very objective view of looking at this position and certainly understands the responsibility to those pension members. So I'd ask that we unanimously approve his appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And Mr. Weezer is our next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Perez.
Good morning, Councilmember.
And I think you understand the importance of this program to the economic well-being of the city. And I've known you for some years, and I've seen you in various capacities, whether it's your volunteer activity or professional career, that you are one who is willing to take on tough issues and keep in mind what the mission or goal is of that organization that you're involved with. In this case, there's going to be various issues that come up, some tough decisions to make. But I think in me watching you over these past few years, you have the resolve to ensure that the best interests of the city are our first and foremost in the decision-making. So I don't have any questions. I know that you have the fortitude, the experience, and the commitment. Because a lot of these Commission appointments are really what the Commissioners make of them. We have some Commissioners that are very active, others that play a key role. But knowing you and what you've done, I think you're going to be one of the active ones. And so we appreciate you giving up your time and knowing how demanding life could be as an attorney, especially as a partner at a law firm, and how giving of and to the city versus billing will be a challenge. But we appreciate your willing to give your skills to the city of Los Angeles. So thank you very much for being part of this.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Mr. Labange.
Just want to, again, wish you well, wish your family well, and I want to know what position you play in baseball?
First baseman and a manager.
First baseman, I know a manager, so this is great to have that. Do you stretch before each game?
I should stretch more often because I'm in the 40s now and I'm starting to pull some hamstrings.
It's catching, it's catching. That's good. Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. My best to your family.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one public speaker, Carver Van Nuys, Mr. Zumadog.
Oh, thank you! I was just a city clerk, I was blowing a gasket because they weren't calling public comment. I'd like to say yes.
We had to close the public hearing on this, but we'll reopen it as practice.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to let the people of Los Angeles know that they opened this up because once it says it has not been held on the agenda and people show up, they're not going to be very happy if you say you can't have it. Now on to important things. I'm very concerned, I'm the single citizen who showed up every day about this pension money. When I started to study the global economy and I saw that Wall Street was going to be tanking, and I'm very concerned about pension packing. The mayor, he has all these Commissioners up there, and everybody knows that the city was invested in overly risky Wall Street investments and bottom-up real estate projects. I'm so outraged, I don't know what to say. The city is now on the verge of bankruptcy and will be going bankrupt over these pension and fire. I don't know what the situation, okay. As you can see, I'm all worked up, I need to gather myself for a second because I was running around here. I think the mayor needs to go to jail. I would like the federal authorities to get in there. The mayor packed the pension boards. He forced the pension Commissioners to invest in risky Wall Street investments. I sat here and warned, pension money is at risk. You did nothing. The city is bankrupt. We are facing firings and loss of services. You can't even run the city anymore. You got fire trucks falling into sinkholes after water main breaks because infrastructure's too old. And I don't know what the solution is, but I really, really, really think we need to, I don't know, public stonings are not allowed anymore. But basically, what I'm here to say is you have a corrupt mayor, Antonio Villarosa, he must be recalled or put in prison.
He is not discussing this appointment.
Okay, let me get back on topic then. Let me just say to Mr. Perez, I'm very concerned, do not let the mayor Villarosa bully and strong-arm this pension commission into going overly risky. The city's bankrupt. Villarosa, you blew it, you clown!
If we could, that would be a warning on personal items. If you'll please discuss ideas that are before us, your views, but as per the Code of Conduct, if you will please abide by that, and that will be a warning. If we can please prepare the roll on this nomination and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations and welcome aboard again. Thank you. Round of applause for our new Commissioner. Next item called special, please.
Item 20 called special for Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, item number 20, and we do have a card, so we'll take that first. Mr. Zumadog on item number 20.
Yes, and I'd like to say, I don't know what this item is because there are no agendas here and the offices are closed. So I had a, so can you please read the, can you read the item, can the clerk read the item, then I will comment on it.
Sir, you called this special and you filled out a card.
Well, because there's no, let me explain.
Sir, no, this is not a conversation.
Can you read the item?
Do you have anything on this item?
Can you, respectfully, respectfully, Eric, please, if you could please read the item. There's no agendas here and there's nowhere where you can read it. And can you please read the item?
We'll let you speak after Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Weezer, if you'll please keep your voice down, Mr. Dogg, too, it's coming over a little too loud here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, I just wanted to bring to all of our attention the impact that this economy has had on people's and families' ability to put food on their table. This item here will allow us to support SB 35, it's an Oropesa bill which would establish and maintain a central database that enables a food bank or a non-perishable organization that has interest in receiving non-perishable and perishable food donations to contact a food facility that has an interest in donating food. And with the current economic climate, the number of California families going with very little food or no food has increased dramatically. They do not know where they are going to get their next meal. And here in Los Angeles, we know that this has affected us as well. There was a rally just a month ago outside the City Hall chambers to bring attention to this matter, and they mentioned how dramatically this has affected the city of Los Angeles compared to other cities. And we hope that through this, we will have a centralized database system that can make it easier, more efficient, to not only get the food to the families who need it, but there are a lot of regulations undue burden on people who even want to donate. This will hopefully also take care of some of the bureaucracy when people do want to give and help those people in need. So colleagues, I ask for your a vote on this very important Senate bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon.
Members, I still remember working for the old Alpha Beta Market. And one of my jobs as a clerk was to destroy milk that was supposed to be sold by a certain date. And I used to throw literally gallons and gallons of milk away that was very drinkable. And it really upset me that that milk would go down the drain when many, many people needed it in the community. There were laws that were introduced to allow organizations like grocery stores to give that food away, but we still have a long way to go. About 20 years ago, I volunteered for the men's organization, ironically, to go pick up exactly that kind of food from grocery stores. And people were very giving at the stores. Whenever something was outdated, just by a day, they would gladly donate it to men. And I used to pick it up in a truck with Gina, their food coordinator. But we have a long way to go. Those systems are antiquated. This bill would allow us to create a network of coordinated and informed strategists to make sure that those occurrences are minimized, where we're destroying food that is edible, although it is dated. And so I wholeheartedly support this, want to commend both Councilman Weezer for raising the issue, and of course, my friend, Senator Oropesa, for writing this legislation. I hope that we do everything we can to ensure that good food does not go to waste.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to thank Jenny Oropesa for her leadership on this. She's a partner of mine on the West Side on a lot of issues, and this is another major issue. Frankly, over this weekend, I had one of the providers with a car full of perishable items, and he couldn't get one of them opened because it was a Labor Day weekend. And so it's even a day-to-day issue. But if timing is anything, we're in the worst of times, at least in my lifetime, we're calling it now the Great Recession that we're in. And anything we can do to make it more efficient and effective to serve those in need, we need to do. Thank you, Senator, for putting it, and thank you, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Alacon for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zumadog from Van Nuys.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I apologize for my voice. I didn't realize I was projecting this loud. And to the Council President, I'm not speaking directly to him, but please ignore my voicemail because you called me up, so thank you so much. Now, regarding this issue, we do have a serious crisis. The city's facing bankruptcy. There'll be lots of firings and people out on the street. I'm here to urge the people of Los Angeles, please become good, decent citizens. There are so many people that could do so much. And I myself have fallen under some hard times recently. And I have found personally, as an activist, it's the people with least that do most. In other words, if I'm broke and need money very badly, if someone has 20 bucks, they'll say, "Here's $10, Zumadog, go get something to eat." But the people that drive around in Mercedes and live in mansions and have the most, they do the least. So I'd just like to say, we have a real, real crisis situation. I'm here to say the stock market's going to plummet, gold's over $1,000 right now. People, it's going to be something, we're about to face something in history that we have never seen before, and it's called depression. So please, and now I've just run into the next minute, so I'll just keep talking. So I'd like to implore the people, and let's just say, Zumadog, I'm running for City Council, and...
If we could bring it back to the food donation legislation that's at hand, Mr. Dogg.
Well, I'd like to say, as a City Council candidate, I would like to say that I would be stepping up on this one. And again, we've got a lot of big issues in the city, but I really do believe we're going to be calling in the National Guard and just have a wave of homelessness, and I said it the first... of homelessness, and I said it the first day I came in here. So, if people recognize Zumadog, hey, this guy's been there, he's done a lot, and I would like to ask people if they could make donations to these food banks on my behalf. Think of me, say, Zumadog, he's out there and he's asking me to do this. If you can easily afford it, I'm here to say again, it's the people, I have found as an activist, my message to the city is, I have found as an activist, it's the people with least that do the most while the others with everything sit there and don't do squat. So, please step up, and thank you, Eric, so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. That'll close our public comment on this item. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for your work on that. Next item, please.
Item 21 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl, and there are cards on that.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, would you like to hear the cards first, or would you like to speak first?
Speaker should be fine.
Okay, Mr. Sacks is our first speaker. After that is Mr. Michael Hunt. After that is Zumadog for one minute.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Given the opportunity that the council is going to take to listen or to act on national legislation, I was just curious to know, because the National Congress and the President is in a turmoil over a health plan, how the city will regard that as a pro or con as the city's living wage ordinance--
Mr. President, he is not talking about this piece of legislation.
--from employees.
If you could bring it back specifically to the Ryan White legislation, thank you very much, Mr. Sacks.
I'm looking at the Ryan White legislation, the city is asking for a pro vote in favor of this legislation, and I'm asking how the city will act regarding the Health Care Reform Act in front of Congress.
Thank you. I don't know if you were here that day, but we were on record on the health care reform and did pass a resolution. That's available online for your convenience, and we can get a copy of it here. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Yeah.
And after that is Zumadog.
This is regarding the AIDS treatment. Any treatment that helps individuals in health and prosperity, I'm for. I think this should have been done probably approximately eight years ago, and it's said that it has to wait to the Obama administration to go through, but anything regarding benefiting the Ryan White HIV treatment for people in humanity is a yes vote on this one, and I'm speaking that on behalf of Matt Dow, but please vote yes on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Zumadog for one minute.
I'd like to save my time for the--
All right, Mr. Rosendahl will be our speaker then.
Mr. President, I appreciate the public comment on this as well. Many of you know the tragic death of this young man that happened, and in 1990, the Congress passed the Ryan White Comprehensive AIDS Research Emergency Act, which has been reauthorized three times to continue to do this. It's care for low-income uninsured and underinsured individuals and families affected by HIV. For God's sake, at this point, when I saw the governor cutting back on funds for AIDS, I hope to God that it doesn't happen, and for the federal legislation as well. The AIDS epidemic continues throughout the earth. In our country, we see more people of color getting it because of our criminal system where sex happens in the prison and women of color are getting it, so there's an increase among minority groups and then again among young people who just don't realize they're not invincible and that they are vulnerable. So, we as a city are saying to the federal government, please reauthorize the Ryan White Act. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next item, please.
Item 22 called special for cards and a substitute motion on 22M has been circulated.
Dr. Clyde Williams, our first speaker.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Annualized costs for the special events. Wow, $5 million for just today, but tomorrow, yes, tomorrow it's $10 million annualized. This is equivalent to the entire budget of all neighborhood councils. Now, in the special events, I don't see audit trails. There was one item that says, well, it's going to be charged, but we don't know how much it's going to be, and that's for the Latino heritage. There are others that are reimbursed, but there's never an audit track. Our poor neighborhood councils have to go through audits and audits and audits and declarations as to who has vested interests in these various programs that we have, and we do the same thing. However, here's $20,000, $30,000 for one event, and there's no audit trail. Councilman Rosendahl used the Great Recession. I saw the Great Depression too, and it wasn't pretty, and it's a lot. I saw it, yeah. So, I say, if we're going to have shared sacrifices and shared responsibilities, let's get the audit system into the special events, and I really respected Councilperson Han for her no vote on the previous one. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
All right, we're here on fee waivers, and actually, what I've seen in the last two weeks in chambers was Han and Weston speaking up about the actual cost of the fee waivers. That's concerning me because the actual cost is not really being submitted to our CLA for the actual cost, in that either we're spending too much money, or we're charging, or we're saying we're spending money that we don't have, and the cutbacks should not go on the special fee waivers or anything. The cutbacks should go on the actual cost of how much it costs. I witnessed Herb Weston says that he had four things that they charged him like $1,100 for, and he said it didn't cost nowhere near that because there was no officers there. So, be aware of the actual cost. Listen to Janice Han and listen to Herb Weston on this, and let's get an actual budget for these special fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Zumadog is our last speaker for a minute.
Yes, thank you, and some current concerns of mine regarding special event fee waivers. A lot of times it'll say reimbursed by the event sponsor. Well, we do need audits to make sure those are reimbursed, because I know city council and city hall, they have a bad habit of turning the other cheek and turning a blind eye and allowing debts to go uncollected, and now we're in big problems. So, I'd like to make sure we have audits to make sure when it says that the Vanity Fair Party or the whatever is reimbursing the city, is there some way we can find out? I'd like you to do that. Secondly, I find it quite interesting that after years and years, we get up there and Janice Han says, oh, these are estimates and it's not the proper cost. Wow, looks like the city's been overbilling for these special event fee waivers, and I call it, you know, you've got to be concerned, some people might decide to take out a racketeering and corruption lawsuit over this, and I do believe that the special event fee waiver has become a perverted system, and I'm glad that Councilmember Parks stood up. Shame on Richard Alakon and Janice Han for trying to wiggle their way out of taking any responsibility. Thank you, and God bless Bernard Parks.
God bless you, Bernard.
Thank you, and I second that motion. God bless you, Mr. Parks. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 24 called special for cards.
All right, item number 24. Mr. Dogg is out of time, but we do have Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, and then Mr. Sacks.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. I'll only take one minute. Where's the fiscal impact statement for this particular project? Oh, it's a special event, another one. I'm going to be attending this one, so I say I don't mind spending the money because I'm going to get some benefits, but they also forgot the Bureau of Street Services are going to have to put up some barricades and a few other things because of the parking exclusion. So, get it together. Let's have an audit of this one, because shared sacrifices, shared responsibilities should be applying to all special events. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks. After that is Mr. Hunt.
Very quickly on this one, since the Hollenbeck police opening is going to be occurring, any movement on the also upcoming opening of the new police headquarters? There was a naming dispute over that.
Sorry, sir, that's not what's before us right now.
I know. This is a new opening--
And, sir, we do appreciate, and we have public comment where you can bring up things like the police station, but what's before us is the Hollenbeck one, unless there's a direct relation to, not a tangential one, a direct one. I'm sorry, and I know I keep stating this to you, and I know that it keeps being a source of contention for you, but please, we need you to speak specifically on these, and otherwise you have two minutes in general public comment for whatever you want, and those items would be fine in the other time. Is there anything about this particular event, sir?
Just the opening, just like the new one, just like the new police station.
Okay, thank you anyways for your comments. Mr. Michael Hunt is next.
Let's take time out to welcome the Hollenbeck Station in its special event, and I guess in its grand opening. Let's hope that the community of Hollenbeck Station as a whole, that they're involved in this, and that it really helps the community understand, community-based policing, in that they're calling this a special event, hoping to see some of the schools, some of the parents, and some of the people that's involved in that community come out and speak and say something, and try and work with the Hollenbeck Division as a whole, as a community, as a group effort to stop crime and enforce community-based policing. Like I said, the key to this is working with the community. Hollenbeck, I hope this helps you, special event to relate to the people.
Thank you. Mr. Zumadog has run out of time, so we'll put his card in the record, and with that on 24, if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 31 called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, for us an item number 31.
I guess if I mention anything about spay and neutering, that would also be off-topic on this item. There seems to be--
No, sir, not if it relates to the Responsible Breeder Act, absolutely not. It would be--
Oh, well then, in that case, let's talk. There were several editorials in the Long Beach Press-Telegram, in the Daily News, in the LA Times regarding these laws regarding spay and neutering, how they will not work, how they do not work, how they increase the cost to the city, and they even mentioned that the city of LA, the cost has gone up higher than before the laws were enacted. And yet, you're moving forward with more spay and neutering, with more controls over breeds. What will happen when people just put them out on the street? Unwanted animals and pets are put out on the street, and all the controls that you seem to invest in turn against the good deed of responsible pet ownership.
Thanks, sir. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
I'm against this one. Neutering and all of that other stuff, I think let animals be animals. Let them reproduce in a responsible way that the owners should be responsible for, and really just take hold, because if we were neutered as human beings, we wouldn't like it. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you, and even though this is on responsible breeding, Mr. Zumadog is over his time, so we will put his card in the record. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Karetz has asked me to make some comments on this particular piece of legislation. Loopholes in existing laws and lack of enforcement de facto allow commercial animal breeding facilities to ignore basic humane conditions in the treatment of animals. There are no laws that address the negative impact of large-scale breeding or either pet overpopulation or local animal control activities. It is estimated that there are 5,000 to 10,000 non-USDA licensed puppy mills in the U.S., an estimated 2 to 4 million puppies sold each year from puppy mills, both licensed and unlicensed, estimate 3 to 4 million dogs and cats in euthanized by shelters each year. This bill would help to address the wide range of issues affecting dogs and cats that come with puppy mills, including animal cruelty, animal suffering, disease, and malnutrition. This bill would help to improve the welfare of animals at breeding facilities, limit the number of unwanted animals relinquished and euthanized at local shelters, and save the citizens of Los Angeles from additional expenses. Paul is right now attending to the DWP problem, which is obviously the sinkhole, and that's where he should be, but on behalf of Paul and myself, Mr. President, I think this is a very worthwhile piece of legislation, and we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll then on this item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 32 called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Arnold Sacks on item number 32. You have one minute left, sir. And we'll include Mr. Dogg's name with the record as well.
Yes, thank you again. Quimby Fee article on your legislation, the city council changed the ordinance regarding, I believe, the size of units to be developed, now allowing as little as 300 square feet to be considered a livable unit. When that was considered, is that considered in the Quimby Fees as the overall unit to be constructed in these complexes? Can we get a breakdown for the public's benefit of just what exactly the size of the units are regarding these condominium conversions in buildings that are going up? How many of them will be 300 square feet, like little more than bread baskets?
Thank you, sir. Just a point of information, I do happen to know this, none of them are 300 feet or less. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
That leaves item 33 called special for cards.
Okay, item 33. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker, and then Mr. Michael Hunt. We'll add Mr. Dogg's name to the record as well.
Special session. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. Shared responsibility, shared sacrifice. You have a statement that because of various outstanding issues, departments have been unable to initiate many of the service reductions, thereby we're even more imbalanced in our budget than we were before. Question, who's in charge of these departments? Why haven't they complied with the budget requirements? Why don't you just take out the parts that cannot be negotiated and sacrifice the rest of the departmental budgets? Why are we doing this? Why are you going to spend time in a while to do these things? What is the problem in getting the reductions in the budget? Just cut off the money and let them hassle it out. Maybe it's because they were undefined, unidentified at the beginning, and they should have been clearly identified as part of the budget process. Councilman Parks did an excellent job. God help him. He needs it. So, please, give them a timeline, give them a real budget by department, and get rid of the department heads that have not been able to initiate your directions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Can I get my two minutes on this? Actually--
You have one minute left, sir.
This is dear to my heart. Early retirement incentive programs, that should have been in effect. Actually, anybody that's working over 22 years for the city of Los Angeles should be offered a special retirement pension. Number two, cut out a lot of this waste that the city is wasting money on programs that do not work. As we see one down in Venice Beach, it's not working. It's a waste of money. It has cost the city more money to run this program than it's brought in, and it's violated people's First Amendment rights. Let's look at-- Let's look at this. Early retirement incentive programs and cut the waste. Two things. If I was president of the council, that would automatically happen. If I was the mayor of LA, that would automatically happen. Give me two weeks in the mayor's office, and that will be done.
That will close our public comment. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Any adjourning motions? Yes, if I can ask everybody to rise then for our adjourning motions. If I can please ask everybody in chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. And Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members. I'd like to ask, we adjourn in memory of Ernest Katz Jr., who founded the Los Angeles Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. You would often see his son in recent years come down here and talk about the philharmonic, and their important way to educate young musicians. Ernest lived to be 95 years old, truly a great man. I ask we adjourn in memory of Ernest Katz Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? We'll next be in session tomorrow. We will be in session tomorrow. That is September 9th, 2009. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great day.
Good, okay, Steve. Come on. Come on. Yeah, okay. Did you make that go? Yeah. Get this one.[1772.41]